...accommodate an automotive rental use within the existing building occupied by an auto body shop located at 5923 Production Way. And the legal description is lot forty-three, district lock three-ten, group two, New Westminster, District Plan 200675. The public, anyone who feels that the interest in their property is affected by this zoning amendment will be given an opportunity to be heard or to present written submissions, respecting those matters contained in the proposal. If you wish to speak about this particular proposed bylaw, we'd ask that you commence your comments to the city council by clearly stating your name and address. I'd like you to come to the stand mike, and then you can give us the benefit of your views. Members of council may, if they wish, ask questions of you following your presentation. However, the main function of council members at this evening's public hearing is to listen to the views of the public. It's not the function of council at the public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with individual citizens. Everyone, as I said, will be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one will be, or should feel discouraged from, or prevented from making his or her views known. If you wish to present a written submission, we'd ask that you do so by giving it to our corporate officer, and copies of the submissions will be available from her on request following the hearing. And I'm going to ask our corporate officer if she could let us know if there was any correspondence and how this public hearing was advertised.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The public hearing has been advertised by placing a notice on the City Hall Notice Board on Tuesday, November twentieth. An advertisement was placed in the November twenty-seventh and twenty-ninth issues of the Langley Times. In addition, seventy-six notices were mailed and hand-delivered to the owners and occupiers of all parcels of land within a one-hundred-meter radius of the subject property, and council has not received any correspondence on this topic.
Thank you very much, and I'm now going to ask Mr. Mo Zabon to give us the benefit of the presentation from the Open Road Group. And please.
Thank you, worship and council member. The current zoning is I-two, light industrial. We're asking for a C-two, service commercial zone. Approximately, the existing building is about nineteen thousand six hundred square feet. Parking provided, about seven-nine stalls. The parking required is twenty-six stalls. This is some of the project information to go through the reasoning process. We did some beautification for the landscape and for the, along Fraser Highway and along the sides of the building. This is the current condition, not the current, sorry, this is the old condition of the building, and since then, the building has went through major transformation. And with the assistance of Martini Construction, we did some re-cladding, we did some landscape along Fraser Highway and also on the east side, along the property, and paving to follow. And basically, new facade at the entrance of the building. The yellow section, the yellow square is where Hertz will be conducting their operation. It will be using this facility, it's about three-hundred square feet, inside, tucked inside the building, basically. This is how the building will look like, the south elevation, east elevation, and what the cladding looks like all around. It's white cladding with a new cladding with a kind of a black band around the bottom of the building. This is the interior, approximately what the building looks like in its daily operation. This is the Richmond Auto Body, basically, of Langley. And this area here will be occupied by Hertz. They are very integral part in our daily operations, so quite a good fit for us. This is during construction, scopes and benefits. Only new vehicles will be used. The Metro Vancouver, will serve Metro Vancouver. Obviously, more taxes to the city. The rental could be designated, could be areas, basically offsites. You could do rentals, and potentially we'll see it more work. And it's within walking distance to ICDC, and will basically serve Langley and lower mainland. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this particular proposal? I see no one jumping up, so thank you very much. And what I like now is a motion to rise and report. Moved by Counselor James, seconded by Counselor Martin. Did I do a motion to go into?
Is this just a motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, right.
Thank you.
Thank you, because I'll do that on the next one. A motion to close the public hearing. Again, Counselor James and Counselor Martin, all of those in favor. Motion is carried. And now I need a motion to go into Committee of the Whole. Moved by Counselor Wallace, seconded by Counselor Arnold, all of those in favor. It is carried. And this Committee of the Whole is two opportunities. As council know, we had a presentation on the carbon-neutral options for 2012, and I'm going to ask Mr. Haycock if he could come forward to the desk and walk us through the presentation, and then I will provide opportunity for public input. Welcome. And you want to make sure you work as close to that microphone as you can. Thank you. Good night.
I'm Russ Haycock, and I'm here to present a brief presentation on the carbon-neutral options discussion paper that I've written for staff. Mr. Mayor, as you recall, I've been in front of you a few times, one to do your, present your community plan, another to present your corporate plan. And I believe I was here this spring presenting an update on your corporate plan. Tonight, we're going to go through very quickly a review of the Provincial Climate Action Charter, and then what's been completed, how to become carbon-neutral according to the commitment, and then the cost to become carbon-neutral, which of course are important, the options in front of you, and the recommendation that is stated in the discussion paper. The Provincial Climate Action Charter, of course, is a voluntary commitment that council made to the province to become carbon-neutral. And essentially, what you're asked to do is to reduce your greenhouse gas emissions as much as you can, and then to purchase offsets for the remaining emissions. So, no municipality, of course, can reduce emissions to zero. It's impossible. You have to consume energy, and you can't possibly reduce it to nothing. So, in the end, after all you've done to reduce as practically as possible, you're still going to remain, or you're still going to have some emissions remaining. Now, the Climate Action Charter, you know, is an absolute commitment on an annual basis, so emissions are calculated annually, and if you are to become carbon-neutral, then you need to purchase offsets annually to offset your annual emissions. In the past, of course, you've endorsed the Corporate Energy and GHG Emissions Management Plan in 2010, and then, of course, the progress report earlier this year, and a brief summary of these inventories. In 2008, it was approximately eleven-hundred tons, and in 2010, that number came down to about nine-hundred tons. There's not been an inventory done in 2011 or 2012, but it's not been critical to do that. And if the commitment is to become carbon-neutral for the 2012 year, and that data won't be available to staff until early in 2013, so staff didn't feel that there was a, or it was critical to do the 2011 or the 2012 inventories, and especially, whereas 2012 would be an estimate. So, the Provincial Climate Action Charter, the accounting for that system is a little different than the data that you've been presented with in the plans previous. The difference really for the city is that corporate solid waste is not included in the provincial carbon neutral accounting. So, whereas the emissions were about eleven-hundred tons in 2008, according to the province, the emissions would be slightly lower when we exclude corporate solid waste. In 2010, they would be slightly lower, at seven-hundred-and-twenty-one tons, excluding corporate solid waste again. So, the estimate, and of course, we don't have any, we haven't looked at the data, but the estimate for 2012 is about eight-hundred tons. That's somewhere in the middle of the values of, between 2008 and 2010. And the cost for one ton of carbon, or to purchase one ton, is twenty-five dollars. So, simple math, the cost to become carbon-neutral is approximately twenty-thousand dollars. I provided a data table in the report, just so you could look at the cost per ton and how that may change over time, and then the range of emissions that you may see in 2012 once the emissions inventory is done. So, you can see the range is anywhere from fourteen-thousand dollars to twenty-seven-thousand dollars, approximately. In 2012, the price for one ton offset will be twenty-five dollars. It shouldn't be any lower, it shouldn't be any higher. It's pretty much set in 2012 at twenty-five dollars. And for council's information, you should be aware of two additions to your inventory in the future, and one, of course, is your community center, which may add eighty to a hundred tons, depending on how you build it and how energy-efficient it is. And then, of course, there's the GHG emissions associated with external contracting, and those haven't been calculated yet, but staff would come to council once they understand what those emissions are in the future. For 2012, the emissions associated with external contracting may well not, you may not be asked to count those. So, that's to be seen. The options in the paper, I provided six options, and really, there's a range of options, from doing nothing, an option one, to purchasing the offsets and then investing heavily in renewable energy projects for the city. In the corporate plan, we reviewed some not-so-aggressive options, because you don't have, you don't have any options that you can pay back really quickly. I mean, the capital costs for some things, like solar hot water or solar photovoltaic projects, would be just too high and take too long to pay back. So, the option that we're recommending is to simply set aside the funds to become carbon-neutral for 2012 until you need to make a decision in 2013, and simply continue to invest in energy reduction projects as per the management plan that you endorsed a few years ago. Option three is really recommended, because you don't need to make a decision right now, although you really should set aside the funds, so it's in your budget. You could set aside the funds as an option into a carbon-neutral reserve fund. So, those funds, if they were twenty-thousand dollars, say, would go into a fund that could either be used to purchase the offsets in 2013, or would be available to staff for projects that would reduce greenhouse gas emissions directly. And that option, the carbon-neutral fund and using it for projects would be, I guess, an alternative to actually purchasing the offsets in 2012, and that the province has said that they may allow that in 2012, but I've not seen anything official in that regard from the province. So, really, it represents business-as-usual if you set aside the funds in terms of investments in energy reduction projects, but you'll have the money available to pay the offset if council decides to do so in the future.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from Counselor Hall?
Oh, yeah, I got two, thank you. It's a pretty comprehensive look, and there's lots of different options. So, the first question is, I don't want to be left out in the, sort of the isolation ward and making a decision without knowing what everybody else is doing out there. So, is there any indication of what other municipalities, particularly of similar size to our own, are doing? Are they choosing this recommended option number three, or are they doing some other thing?
Mr. Mayor, I can't tell you what other municipalities are doing your size, because I have not done that research. It's a little early to be able to say what everybody's going to do, but my sense is that councils are setting aside the dollars, setting aside the funds, or they're putting it into a reserve fund. Some municipalities have paid. Harrison Hot Springs were the first in the province to pay, but it was only about a hundred dollars, so that was pretty easy for them to do.
Okay. Second question?
Second question. Do we have the opportunity then, perhaps, after setting aside some money, when that TIMs project comes online, do we have the opportunity to invest in ourselves? In other words, to reduce our carbon imprint, we might want to build in a way that has reduced consumption. So, could we, rather than buying carbon offsets, purchase some energy efficiencies in our own operation from perhaps thermal heat or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Mayor, it would seem prudent to do that, instead of giving money to the province for this commitment, especially in light of possibly a change in government, and especially in light of nothing formal from the province to officially state that thou shalt pit in 2013. The, I think one of the most practical ways in 2013 at least, and to take care of the 2012 commitment, would be to put money, or that equivalent money, into a project that directly reduces GHG emissions. And as Counselor Hall indicates, if you did not purchase the offsets, then maybe the second most prudent option would be to say, spend the money on a better design for the TIM Center, or for equipment within, or systems within that building that would reduce GHG emissions. So, but my caveat there would be that that money be spent on projects that reduced GHG emissions, i.e. natural gas consumption, because as you know, electricity in this province is now carbon-neutral because B.C. Hydro is a Crown Corporation. So, with that money, we're put towards projects that reduced, say, natural gas consumption in buildings, and that would be a prudent way to do it.
And it's my understanding, just to follow up what you said, is that the current government has not given their plans for the future, and I don't believe any of the opposition parties that are running have talked about what stand they're going to take. So, the best thing is for us to set it aside until we get some clarity as to what might be happening, whoever the new government is.
That would be my recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Counselor Martin?
Could you give us and the audience an idea of what Pacific Carbon Trust does with the money, what they, you know, when we pay them?
Okay. That's a good question. There's a number of projects that the Pacific Carbon Trust invest in, and they purchase the actual retirement of greenhouse gas emissions from whomever has a verifiable project or a verifiable reduction in GHG emissions. So, I think one of the projects that is most notable is TransLink's projects. And of course, they have come under some scrutiny in terms of how those projects and when those projects were done, but the bottom line is, is that GHG emissions were reduced. Pacific Carbon Trust bought a verified GHG emissions reduction from a Crown Corporation or whomever they do it from, and they make that available to you for purchase. There's all kinds of information on Pacific Carbon Trust's website, of course. The projects range from anything from tree planting to reduction initiatives in, say, Alberta or other parts of the world. And it would be nice if councils had the option of making sure that their offsets were purchased for projects that were, of course, in British Columbia, and that's the whole idea that the province is telling the local government, but maybe more so, more local than just in the province of B.C. Maybe the lower mainland would be a better bet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I need a motion to rise and report. Someone would like to move that. Counselor Wallace, seconded by Counselor Arnold, all of those in favor. It is carried. We'll be dealing with this later on in the agenda. Thank you very much. We'll now move into the regular agenda, and the first item I need is a motion to approve the regular minutes from November the nineteenth. Moved by Counselor Schaefer, seconded by Counselor Martin. Are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all of those in favor. It is carried. Moving on into petitions and delegations, we have one delegation this evening. I'd like to ask Mr. Jamie Patterson if he would like to come to the microphone, and you can either sit at the microphone, or you can stand at the stand mike, and you have a couple of guests that you can, and I guess Arnie Nelson is going to be...
Olson.
Hey?
Arnie Olson.
Olson, what am I saying? I guess I was thinking of Willie Nelson. Anyways, Arnie Olson, I'm sorry, Arnie, I should know that well enough. Welcome.
Thanks very much. Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's a privilege to appear on behalf of the Special Olympics B.C. Summer Games coming to Langley in seven short months. My name is Arnie Olson, and it's my privilege to be the chair of the Games Organizing Committee. On July eleventh through to July fourteenth, eleven-hundred athletes with an intellectual disability are going to converge on Langley from fifty-five communities across B.C. These eleven-hundred athletes are going to be accompanied by over four-hundred coaches, friends, and family, and they're going to be supported by over a thousand local volunteers. And that weekend, with their energy and enthusiasm, they're going to light up this community. They'll arrive on Thursday, July eleventh, and for the next three days, their accommodations and transportation will be organized by the Langley School District. On Friday morning, we'll have the Games' opening ceremonies preceded immediately by a law enforcement torch run. Athletes will compete all day Friday and Saturday, and they'll compete in eleven different sports. And these sports are track-and-field athletics, swimming, five-pin bowling, ten-pin bowling, swimming, I mentioned swimming, soccer, bocce ball, basketball, softball, and golf, and rhythmic gymnastics, and powerlifting. The closing ceremonies will be on Saturday evening, followed immediately by a dance for over eleven-hundred excited athletes, imagine that. And then on Sunday, these athletes, coaches, friends, and family will fan out across the province with great and warm memories of their time and their athletic experience in our community. These Games are part of an important, are an important part of a four-year cycle. Last year were the regional qualifiers across the province. This year, coming in the summer, is the provincial level of competition. Next year, the national competition, and in 2015, in Los Angeles, will be the Special Olympics World Games. So, you can see that as part of this progression, these athletes are counting on us to deliver a quality athletic experience. So, that's an overview of the Games. A wonderful Games Organizing Committee has come together, full of vibrant and energetic people, and including Jamie Patterson, whom you hear from in just a moment when he describes how you can partner together with us. So, I'd like to turn our focus, just for a moment, to the individual athlete, because that's really who this competition and this event is all about. It'll take me just a moment, and I have a sixty-second video for you.
I used to never really talk. Ever. I was scared and shy. It was hard to look at people's faces. I was afraid if I said something wrong, everyone would laugh at me. But then I started to play golf with Special Olympics. I made friends and won lots of gold medals. But I learned more than just playing golf. Special Olympics helped me to find my voice. And now everyone else is speechless.
That's cool.
I used to never really talk.
It's my pleasure to introduce to you a gifted young man, an advocate for Special Olympics, well acquainted with these Games as an athlete ambassador, Matthew Williams.
Welcome, Matthew.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Matthew Williams, and I'm a Special Olympic athlete from Langley. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with all of you tonight. I have been in Special Olympics for six years. I compete in speed skating, curling, basketball, floor hockey, track-and-field, soccer, and In the last six years, I have competed in three provincial Games, and I'm really looking forward to competing in my fourth provincial Games in my hometown of Langley. I am really looking forward to competing in basketball at the Langley Events Center. Our basketball team and all Langley athletes that qualified are training hard in preparation for doing their best at these upcoming Games. We want to thank you for hosting the thirteen-hundred athletes from across B.C. and the Yukon for the 2013 Special Olympics B.C. Summer Games. All the Langley athletes are very excited and thrilled to have the Games here. We know that Langley will do a great job, be great hosts, and make this the best Special Olympics B.C. Summer Games experience ever. I would like to invite you and all Langley citizens out to experience the Special Olympic Summer Games and see for yourself the determination we, as Special Olympic athletes, have in being the best we can be. I know this will be a great experience for not only the thirteen-hundred athletes, but for the coaches, volunteers, and fans of Special Olympics. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Jamie?
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for allowing us this time. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jamie Patterson, and it's my privilege to sit with Chairman Arnie Olson and the rest of our SOBC Special Olympics team as vice chair. It was two and a half years ago that we had the privilege of hosting the 2010 B.C. Summer Games, and for us, it was such an honor to be able to work with you, mayor and council, to be able to showcase all the magnificent facilities that the Langleys have to offer, as well as being able to work with your staff and, of course, the volunteers of Langley to make those Games happen. The Special Olympics requested to hold their Games here in Langley, and I believe this is in part because of the success we had with the 2010 B.C. Summer Games, and secondly, a strong push from one Sharla Magar, who I think most of you may know, who was part of the local chapter of the Special Olympics program. The Special Olympics program provides individuals with an intellectual disability opportunities to enrich their lives and to celebrate personal achievements through positive sports experiences. These Games are an opportunity for these athletes to go on to the national event which will be held next year in Vancouver. Now, the Special Olympics program does not have as many athletes as the Summer Games did, but we will have thirteen-hundred very special athletes, all their coaches, assistants, officials, all arriving here in your fair city in July, along with families and friends who all come out to watch these events. And I think some of you have seen some of these Special Olympics on TV, and they do tug at your heartstrings, and I think the people of Langley will really come out and support this program. Like most events, we will be actively working with the Langleys, asking for sponsorship from our many friends in the business community. To date, Arnie mentioned that we have the school board on board to help us, the township of Langley, both the local papers, who have already graciously stepped forward to help us make these Games a success. And we have come here today to ask you, the city of Langley... And we have come here today to ask you, the City of Langley, to consider being one of our champions for this event. We would like to ask you if you would consider, in your 2013 budget, of becoming one of our gold sponsors. This would be a financial contribution of $10,000 or greater. And I do have a sponsorship package that I'd like to leave with you. Along with that, we also have one other request, and I think Matthew's already mentioned that, and that is that you would consider either being a volunteer and/or at least coming out and being a fan of these Games, and come out and cheer on these special athletes. So on behalf of the Special Olympics, we want to thank you for your time, for the facilities that you provide, and we have a lot of work here to do in this community, but we thank you for your consideration to participate with us. So, thank you very much.
And Counselor Schaefer was just playing his tie in recognition of the presentation, so...
Do you want us to sing with that, Ted?
Counselor Schaefer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just leaned forward, and it just happened to go off. Jamie?
Yes.
You have an excellent young man, and he's a credit to sport and to all athletes who's sitting there with you.
Absolutely.
He is... he is one of the best speakers I've heard anywhere, and I've gone to a lot of functions. Could you just give my colleagues a bit of background on his position with the Special Olympics?
Matthew, you want to share?
Thank you. I've pretty much started public speaking probably back when I was about 16 or 17, and I got my first real big invite to go to Marrakech, Morocco, as part of a global messenger speaking group, which is... was first started by Sergeant Shriver, who is founder of the Peace Corps, as some of you might know. I sit as one of... out of 12 of the athletes from Canada around the world for four years. I also am a global congress chairperson, so I represent all the athletes around the world for five years, and am fortunate enough as well to be part of the Special Olympics International Board of Directors. So I sit with other members that are prominent in their sport organizations, Nadia Komanyich, Bart Connor, Tim Shriver, who's the founder of Special Olympics, also sits there as well. So I've been very fortunate to have some very lucky opportunities, and... but really, my real joy is getting to be part of provincial Games and any sport competitions, and I thank you for letting me be here tonight.
You are a credit to all sports individuals, and your family must be very proud of you. You're doing an excellent job, Matthew. Great, thanks, Jamie.
Any other questions or comments from Members of Council? I will say that if you leave the package with Mr. Light, and then I would suggest that you contact him in order to make a formal request through our process for the support that you've asked for, and that'll come forward to Council through Darren. And so if you can do that, that'd be great. You know, we participate with the Association for Community Living and a lot of the things that they do, and a lot of the Special Olympians are part of that organization, and Matthew, I know you are as well. So we know the Games will be a great success, and when you bring that many people into both communities, we all benefit from it, so... And we really appreciate, Arnie, your commitment, and Jamie, and the other volunteers, to make this a success, as you said. So, thank you very much for coming. If there are no other questions, we'll move on to the rest of our agenda. Is there anything else you wanted to say before? No, that's it?
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So Mr. Light will work with you, and then we'll end the rest of our staff, and we'll go from there. Okay, moving into the agenda, there are no committee minutes or select committees, so we'll move right into the Mayor's Report. Our next regular council meeting, the last one of this year, just before Christmas, is Monday, December 17. And then our first regular council meeting of the new year will be on Monday, January 14. Counselor Martin, I know you have nothing from Metro Vancouver unless there are any questions, but Counselor Hall?
I just read things in the paper from Metro Vancouver sometimes, and I just want some clarification. So apparently, there was a motion at the Board to reduce the expense rate per day. It's currently at, for non-directors, people attending meetings, it's 300-plus for three hours, and then if it goes longer than three hours, it's double the cost. And there was a motion on the floor suggesting a flat rate of $100 per meeting, and that got offloaded back to staff for further investigation or something. And I'm just wondering what the genesis of that was and where that goes from here, and whether that affects the 2013 Metro budget, or... I just want... I only know what I read in the press.
Counselor Martin?
Well, you know more than I do.
Well, I read the same thing, and it was not for regular meetings. That was for if any director is asked by the Chair to attend a special event on behalf of Metro, if they went to an opening of some sort or things that are not part of their regular functions. And I read the same news article, but I don't know when it came up at the Board level. I think it might have been in one of the committee meetings.
It could have been, it wasn't at the Board level.
Yeah, I didn't think it was at the Board, so...
And I never read it in the paper, so I know nothing about that.
Well, there you go. Maybe we'll get some more information.
Yeah, can we just get some information for maybe the 17th, just to come back for clarity?
Yep.
Thank you.
I mean, I would think it probably is at a committee level, because it certainly has to come to the Board, and it may be at the Finance Committee, I don't know.
We'll ask staff to get more of the details. Any other questions for Counselor Martin on Metro? Seeing none, I know you wanted to speak about the Gateway of Hope, so please.
Yeah, the only thing that I will mention with Metro, on Friday morning on the news, there was a lot of talk about the West Nile, that we're going to save hundreds of thousands of dollars if we... if this motion passed. The motion was passed, but in effect, the savings is only $76,000 a year, not hundreds of thousands of dollars a year like was being reported by the press. So I guess, you know, you have to question what you hear and what you read sometimes. But yes, I do have some... a report that I'd like on the Gateway of Hope for the Salvation Army. We did have our grand opening of the thrift store on... can't remember the date.
It was a cold Saturday.
November the 14th, and it was a cold Saturday. It was beyond the expectations of the Salvation Army. Thousands of people showed up. It was absolutely an incredible day. The projections for the year are probably going to be exceeded if the store keeps at its pace, so it's very good news. I guess the only thing, and I've asked before, is that if anybody has any donations, particularly furniture donations, they are in need of those, and they can be dropped off at the store, which is on 272nd Street in Alder Grove. It's the old field store, so that would be very much appreciated. The other thing is the... it's Salvation Army Kettle Time now. There's thousands of hours to be filled. We're reaching out to the community to volunteer, spend maybe two hours, if you can, or more, ringing the bells to collect money. It's the biggest fundraiser of the year, and it does keep the Gateway of Hope going during the year. But there are other ways that you can support the kettle campaign. This year, you can text your donation, and the text is in capital letters "HOPE1002", and you can text it to 45678, and that will be a $5 donation on your monthly bill, so that would be appreciated. If anybody is interested in helping out with the kettles, you can call the Salvation Army Gateway of Hope at 514-7375, and ask for extension 229. And you do have to fill out a form and what have you, but it would be greatly appreciated if anybody can give any time to the Christmas kettle campaign this year. They will be serving a community Christmas dinner on December 24 at noon, and they will be giving out gift bags to all that attend. They also now run drop-in nights at Coffee House every Thursday from 5 till 8, and we have entertainment there, and it's coming along good. It seems to be very well enjoyed by the people that go there. And as I reported at the last meeting, the Fraser Valley Regional Library Board, Lily, their library live on tour, was going to be making an appearance. They did appear at the Gateway of Hope, and it was a screaming success. They were so... the library was so pleased. They gave out more than 12 library cards, and it's to people that do not have a permanent address, and before you couldn't get a library card unless you had a permanent address. Gave away all the free books that she had there, so she's very... she was very, very pleased, the library was very pleased, and they will be doing this once a month from here on in. So that's about it for now, unless there's any questions.
Any questions, or Counselor Martin, on the Gateway of Hope? Don't see any, so moving right into library happenings, Counselor Schaefer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first one I have is Conversation Circles. It's Thursday, December 6, 13th and 20th, from 10:00 a.m. till 11:30 a.m. And please join the group in the library to practice your English in a fun and friendly environment. You will improve your conversation skills and make new friends at the same time. Refreshments will be provided, and it is a drop-in. A very buttoned Christmas on Friday, December 21, from 2 till 3 p.m. for kids of all ages. They're invited to make a Santa, snowman, reindeer, or elf ornament using the buttons provided, or bring your own. And if you want to do something different, you can create a winter picture using buttons to decorate, and registration is required. Please call the library for more information for this and other programs at 514-2855. That's it on the library. And on a personal note, I would just like to thank Rosemary and Terry for a job they did on the parade held on Saturday. And I believe a good time was had by all. I know we, as council members, were wetter than drowned rats out there, but next time, could you pick a nicer day? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Schaefer. You stole my note about the parade. So Counselor Hall?
I similarly don't want to rain on their parade, so I want to rain on Counselor Schaefer as one of the voting directors on the Fraser Valley Regional Library Board. I'm still trying to get my head around this increased levy that we face, and I think it's time that we brought some of this to public attention. So there's a difference this year in the levy, somewhere in the neighborhood of $7,000 and change, and there's an increase in costs assessed to the city for materials of over 6%. Now, as I understand it, this increased levy is as a result of less township people coming to the centralized city library to borrow books, but more importantly, city residents perhaps going outside of the city to neighboring township libraries and borrowing books there. So can you clarify what vote was recently done pertaining to this 6%? And clarify the nature of the increased costs that the city is looking to absorb?
Thank you. I believe time is just catching up to us here in the city and our library. When our city hall and library was first built 10 years ago, it was the major library in the area. So the residents in surrounding neighborhoods came here. So then, as time progressed, the township has built the Muriel-Arnison Library. There's another library up in Alder Grove, Brookswood, Murrayville, that have come on board. So now, the township residents are using their libraries more than they are this one. And what happens is for every library book a city resident takes out in the township, the city pays for, and vice versa. So for every library book a township resident takes out of here, the township pays. So it's a reciprocal agreement that we have, but you pay from where you take out the books. And our usage has increased in surrounding areas, and the usage at this library has decreased from township residents. So that causes our prices or rates being different there. So that is where the large percentage comes from in difference of the library. So until, you know, our city residents use this library more, if they were to use this all the time, then our costs would be substantially less or on a better par than with our counterparts. And it's the same thing for using a book or taking a book out in Surrey. You can take a book out, but it costs the city money for residents to take a book out from a surrounding area. So you can take a book out where you please, using your library card, but there is a cost involved. That's it in a 30-second nutshell.
And maybe Counselor Schaefer, if I can, because I did chair the library board for a number of years. There is a formula that has been established amongst all of the members of the regional library that is based on both the size of the library, the usage, and there is an equalization. And for many years, the City of Langley library, because it was the only one, we benefited significantly. And the increase that was talked about in materials does not equate to an overall 6% increase for us, but it is of all of the materials, and that's the books and the replacements and the electronic books and so on, so... And it's one of the things we continually look at, and I know we'll be discussing more when we get to budget time as well, in terms of what options we might have in the future, so... Moving on to the recreate... are there any other questions for Counselor Schaefer? Seeing none, moving on to the recreation update, I mean, the engineering parks and environment update. Mr. Bleeg?
Thank you, your worshiped Members of Council, Member of the public. This week's... or this month's presentation is going to be solely focused on our new organics collection. So I've got a number of materials, some of which Council has already received. So the first is the... is we're going to be distributing later this week a door hanger. I've got a couple of examples here, which will be handed out to all of the single-family residents here in the city, just sort of priming the pump to let them know that we're going to be starting organics collection, kitchen organics collection, starting January the 2nd. So it's a multi-page hanger. It's got a few questions and answers, and then it has a wonderful message from his worship on the back thanking residents for participating. So that'll be going out later this week, and we're going to be making use of stepping stones to distribute that through the community. Then, as Members of Council all have, we have our new sticker. I want to point out for the benefit, just to sort of compare in size, there's the old sticker, and here's our new sticker. One of the most prevalent complaints that we had from residents was, "Why wasn't my green waste picked up?" And the most often, the reason was because when the people put the stickers on, and it says right on the sticker, or sorry, it says, "Place on the deck... place the deckle on the stick on your garbage can, and then make sure that the sticker is facing out towards the street." Because when the trucks come by, they're looking for the sticker. But if you didn't have the sticker faced in the right direction, then obviously, they don't see it, and they're not going to stop and pick it up. So with having a significantly larger sticker, we significantly improve the odds of the driver seeing the sticker and making sure that they stop and pick up your green waste. Then, one of the other things that we've got, and we'll be pointing, we'll have all this information up on our website, and courtesy of Metro Vancouver, I have a brief video for you. Hopefully, it works. It worked for me this afternoon, yes.
Check this out and cancel it. Now, a plastic bag. Kids, stop annoying the yard bin. Put all your food scraps and food-soiled paper into your yard waste bin, but no plastic bags, please.
So as Council can see, we've got some promotional materials available from Metro Vancouver. The other part, working with our communications consultant, and unfortunately, these are currently at the printers right now, but what you see up on the screen is going to be made into a fridge magnet, roughly six inches by four inches. And those, again, what we're going to do there is going to be distributing them in two ways. One is we're going to make sure that the, they get handed out as part of a package of materials to all the single-family residents. What we're also doing is we're working with the school district and we will be distributing them through the school-aged children as part of the social marketing efforts. The school district is already well on its way to doing full organics and recycling at their facilities and they're slowly but surely rolling it out and they have a full-time, two full-time coordinators working on that. So, and staff have met with those coordinators and to make sure that we coordinate our efforts, both as the city and as the school district. So the, I know council has seen some of this before, but it's important that we emphasise these points, that we're going to be collecting the green wastes, kitchen organics, every week and there'll be no limit on the number of cans. We'll also be collecting the Blue Box recyclables every week and no limit. And we'll be collecting two cans of garbage every other week or bi-weekly. If residents do need more garbage pickup, there are stickers available for purchase at City Hall, at Douglas Rec Center and at Tim's. As I stated earlier, the door hanger is slated to go out this week and we're working with our contractor, Mterra, to put together the more comprehensive information package that will be sent out to, again, through stepping stones, to all of the households. The information package is going to contain, each package is going to contain two of the large stickers, the fridge magnet, as well as an updated calendar. We're going to be putting all the information up on our website and then also pushing it out through the social media. And staff are working on setting up a media briefing either later this week or early part of next week. And just a reminder that we're going to be starting all this program, starting January the 2nd. And with that, that concludes my presentation and if council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councillor James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Vlieg, I know, in my neighbourhood anyway, I have some extremely intelligent raccoons. So what we've been doing with our waste up until this point, obviously because this wasn't an option, is we have like a loose-fitting bungee cord. Do you think that that's an acceptable way to keep the lids now that we're moving our organics from one to the other? Like, is that going to cause distress for the collectors or, I don't want to start a trend, but it's a fact?
Councillor James, to the Chair. No, we don't see that as an issue. I mean, obviously if it's padlocked on, that could pose a bit of an issue, but you know, a bungee cord arrangement to try to keep them on, definitely. I mean, that's part of the reason as well why we want to make sure that we collect every week, to make sure that A, the odours and B, that the critters don't get at it. Very important to achieve that. And if I may, I forgot, one thing I did forget to mention, Members of Council may have seen some newspaper articles. As councils aware, the City of Surrey has recently rolled out their organics collection programme. They were quite stunned to find that within the first month of collection, that they already achieved a 35% diversion rate, which is a very significant.
Councillor Martin?
Thank you. I think the only other thing that we, you might want to mention, Mr. Vlieg, in regards to the little clip that you showed us, it is, it is a series of commercials that is being played on, on the local TV stations. In regards to the Christmas campaign?
Thank you, Councillor Martin. Yes, Metro Vancouver is aggressively marketing a Christmas campaign for Christmas waste reduction. To that end, Members of Council and the public that come into the library, here at City Hall, can see a couple of those posters that Metro Vancouver graciously provided, installed on the windows and they have a campaign around that as well. The intention being is to try to work with the community so that they select Christmas gifts that minimise the amount of waste. So try to find something that makes a terrific Christmas gift that recognises the, you know, what the receiver might want, whether that be opera tickets or bungee jumping or music lessons or perhaps childminding. Any one of those activities are great gifts and don't require a lot of wrapping paper or packing materials.
And the wrapping paper is recyclable in our Blue Box, is that correct? Not the foils?
Not the foils. Fairly plain wrapping paper, yes, but anything with the foil, no it's not. And anything that's plasticky is also, because that's considered a film wrap.
Councillor Arnold?
The thing I like about some of these, nowadays we use the bags more so than the wrapping paper and stuff is that usually next year I get back the same bag I gave my daughter this year, so it's a perpetual thing after a while.
Thank you, Councillor Arnold. I had one question if I could, Mr. Vlieg. I'll, I just saw your hand, I'll come to you after I take my comment, thank you. Does this replace the current sticker on green waste cans? I was asked that question.
We will be distributing these. Obviously, if residents are still, can still use these, just the city will not be distributing these. We would very much prefer it if residents would affix the new deckel, because it is so much more visible for the drivers and that we're going to reduce the likelihood or the opportunity for the driver to miss the collection. So we'll still acknowledge these, but we would definitely strongly encourage residents to use the larger sticker.
And the other question is, the biodegradable bags that you can purchase are still going to be picked up?
No, they will not.
They will not?
No. If you, again, if you go back to the, to the video, Metro Vancouver at this point is making it very clear that the biodegradable plastic bags are not acceptable.
Not plastic, the paper?
Oh, my apologies, yes, the craft paper bags are still an acceptable way of dealing with, so for example, in the fall, if you happen to live on a property that has a large number of leaves, absolutely.
Great, thank you. Councillor Hall?
It used to be when you had two different cans, your garbage can would stink, but your green can, because it had wood and whatnot, would have only like a cedar smell to it. Other municipalities are suggesting now with the addition of all these other materials, that the green cans and the accumulation of that is starting to produce some odours in their collection facility. So in our case, what's the destination for this green waste substance? And to what extent are we monitoring the odor build-up at that facility?
Councillor Hall, to the Chair. The green waste material, organics material that is collected here in the city is currently contracted to go to a company called The Answer, which is located on the border of the City of Abbotsford and the township of Langley. We're not, we're not responsible for odor management, but because that facility is regulated by Metro Vancouver, Metro Vancouver does monitor it and if they do receive odor complaints, then Metro Vancouver works with the contractor to minimise those odor issues.
Any other questions for Mr. Vlieg? Seeing none, thank you very much. So January the 2nd?
That's correct.
And all of this material and the information is also available on the website.
It will be, yes.
Thank you. Now moving on to the Recreation, Culture and Community Services. Kim Hilton?
Your Worship Members of Council, fellow staff and viewing audience, this is the update for Recreation, Culture and Community Services for December 2012. Special events, before I get into the one event that we have coming up, I just wanted to say thank you to council for coming out to the Pancake Breakfast. It was a big hit and I think we learned from our first event last year and it went much smoother, thanks to your help as well. So coming up in January, we have our 16th Annual Kids Swap and Sell. We don't actually swap and sell the kids, it's their toys and clothes and that sort of thing. But that's at Douglas Recreation Centre and as soon as our rec guide came out, we were getting calls for it, so it is a popular event. The entire Douglas Recreation Centre is full of tables and there are some commercial tables that are available, as long as the product that they're selling are child-related or family-related. Otherwise, it's lots of lightly-used toys and clothing and that sort of thing that gets sold. So it's a popular event. Tables are $15. If you're a commercial vendor, they're $30. Our Recreation Guide, as I briefly mentioned, did come out last week. It was delivered in the Langley Times newspaper on Tuesday to all the homes in Langley area and some surrounding areas as well. If you didn't get a chance to get your guide, it is available at Douglas Recreation Centre, Tim's Community Centre, the Langley Library and City Hall here. We also have it online on our website at www.city.langley.vc.ca and it's quite easy to navigate through. We are continuing with our Late Night Skate at Twin Rinks for youth. The drop-in is $2. There are, there is skate rental available as well and that runs Fridays from 9:45 to 11:45. We do have a number of staff that are there. Hockey goes on, they have music and some special events. Sometimes we have concerts on the ice as well, so if you're interested, drop by Twin Rinks. And we're running our Winter Fest camp again at Douglas Recreation Centre over the Christmas break to help out with parents who are working on, between the holidays. It runs 8:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We do have before care and after care as well and the cost is here. You can phone Douglas Recreation Centre to register at 604-514-2865. Again, this camp is also found online. I just want to let everyone know of our hours of operation for our facilities. So while we are running the day camp out of the Douglas Rec Center, the Rec Center itself is closed to the general public, right from December 23rd through to opening again on January the 2nd for our regular office hours. Tim's Community Centre, however, is open for most of the holiday. We have reduced hours though from December 27th to the 31st, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We are closed on 25th, 26th and January the 1st and we're open for regular business again on January the 2nd. We just want to wish you a very Merry Christmas and a Happy Healthy New Year and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Kim? Seeing none, thank you, Kim. Moving into our Fire Department Quarterly Report, I'm going to ask Deputy Chief Scott if he would come forward.
Is your green light on the microphone there? Now it is.
It is now. In our third quarter, we saw that by numbers, our statistics for fires were down a little bit, or pardon me, up a little bit over last year. Our alarms were down, our medical emergency calls were up a little bit with us not having any rescue calls in this quarter. We did obviously do public service calls, hazardous materials and our mutual aid calls. On a visual, our total calls for, for the year show our medical emergency responses as being the largest number, followed by alarms, fires and public service and then the, the other calls that you see there, for a total of about 2,350 calls a year to Our total fire losses for the year, or pardon me, for the quarter, in this quarter are just under $100,000, which, when we're talking about the small number of fires, we're only up by one call over last year at this time, but it really doesn't take much in small numbers to really make a change, a noticeable change in the dollar loss amount. We don't have any injuries or any deaths to report at all, in fact, not only in this quarter, but year to date. Most of the activity in our third quarter was with our paid-on-call component of the, of the department. We completed the training, basic training and orientation of six new paid-on-call firefighters. Those six firefighters are now active and responding on calls, which leaves us with a total complement of 23 paid-on-call firefighters. This year they've completed about 3,100, just over 3,100 hours of training and committed to 2,300 hours of responding to calls. One of the big training components that we've done this quarter was basic and heavy vehicle rescue. The heavy vehicle rescue component involved a highway coach, which was donated to us and we utilised that in our training scenarios and was able to provide our firefighters with a real challenge in terms of how to manage vehicle rescues. And there, there needs to be some, some thanks given out to, to a couple of our members. In fact, it was Captain Scott Kennedy and firefighter Dave Murphy who put this month's training together. Both of those individuals are also instructors at the Justice Institute and they took those skills and brought them back to the department and shared it with us and it was very valuable training. One of the other credits we'd like to, to note is that Clover Towing is the company that assists us with finding vehicles that we can use in our, in our rescue training. And they bring those vehicles in, let us tear the cars apart and then they take what's left back to their, their yard. And they don't charge us for that. And that's very generous on their part and we thank them very much for that. The training that we're looking at doing with our paid-call component now is, we're looking into the springtime now and we're looking at doing fire apparatus driver certification with them, which we completed with our career component this year. We'll be doing the same with our paid-call, as well as incident safety officer training and live fire training with the few paid-call firefighters that don't have that training That completes my report and I'd ask if there's any questions for council.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Deputy Chief Scott? I don't see any, thank you very much.
Your Worship, under the umbrella of Fire Services is the Langley Emergency Plan. And with me tonight is Ginger Sherlock. Ginger is the Emergency Planning Coordinator for the Langley Emergency Plan and she would like to provide an update to council as well.
Please, Ginger, if you would like to come up.
While Bob gets that out, I'd like to share with you, apparently there was an earthquake in Anchorage today. Set 5.8. Nothing to worry about. There was no tsunami-related, you know, incident or anything like that. It happened about over 30 miles down, so didn't, they felt it though, but they didn't need to worry about a tsunami. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen, and fellow emergency response staff. This is just a quick overview of what the program is and what we have accomplished this So, as you know, the Langley Emergency Program is divided into three areas of focus to ensure that key objectives that we are mandated to deliver are met. Under the Municipal and Planning and Ops, the program administers the Langley Emergency Program for both the city and the township. We develop and maintain emergency plans, we deliver training and exercise opportunities... We deliver training and exercise opportunities. We maintain primary and secondary emergency operations center, and we liaison with agencies, other governments and organizations. That photo is yours truly. It was taken on a dyke tour with Val Gaffka, a manager from the Township of Langley Engineering, and Tom James, who is an RCMP officer during the freshet preparations. We also manage volunteer emergency response teams. So we recruit, train, exercise and retain volunteer emergency responders. We ensure that emergency social services, which is a mandated service that the city must provide, is delivered to displaced citizens, all done through volunteers. And we maintain emergency communications capabilities. Oh, that photo was an exercise that we had conducted. We also, within that, also provide community education and information. We develop and promote public awareness, education and information. We support personal and neighborhood initiatives, and we maintain our emergency website. That picture is a community emergency response team manager course that the Langley hosted, and we had five municipalities and two post-secondary institutions participating in that educational So just an status report of where we are, I mean, emergency management is mandated to deliver within those five components. So, under planning, we are still behind. We're doing well, but we're still behind. We have departmental plans that still need to be created to dovetail into the overarching emergency plan that we have. In prepare, we do this well, but we need to practice more. We have staff that need to feel confident with both the equipment and what they're being asked to do during an emergency. Mitigate, we're moving into this realm with the completion of our hazard risk and vulnerability analysis that was completed this year. With respond, we do this well. We know this because of the plans that have been produced and have been tested through response. We've done drills that have been conducted and the quality of people involved. And recovery, we haven't started this component yet. The good news is, most municipalities haven't. And we are not alone. Though there is talk of getting a regional committee together formed to start down this So some successes for 2012 for the emergency program is, we do have our hazard risk and vulnerability analysis completed for the city. We have analyzed over 35 hazards, and you will see a report next year. We've conducted a workshop with the airport businesses in order to get them ready and be prepared. We participated in monthly emergency management VC drills. They focused on communication between the municipalities that we have within the Lower Mainland and our provincial supporters. We've delivered regular volunteer training, and we've had over 15 ESS Level 1 responses this year to date. We're moving into our busy, silly season, so we anticipate that number to go up. Last year, we only had five responses. This year, we've had 16. Regular public education sessions have been conducted. The last one was with new directions, where I delivered emergence, emergency preparedness for English as a second language students. Some of the challenges, just so that you are aware, is the staff training and exercises. It happens when I find the time. As you can tell, we've been doing a lot this year. And the lessons learned from things that have happened around the globe are slow to be disseminated to staff and to be applied to current plans. Planning and operation functions need attention and training, especially for the equipment that is specific to the EOC. We need to get in there and learn how to do the job. And currently, we are not meeting the public requests that come in. There's, for three months, there was me, myself and I, consisting of the program. So it's really hard to keep up with the demand, and especially with the freshet, the public demand becomes even more prominent. We can't keep up with the demand right now. The "it" refers to both the EOC and volunteers. So I'm one of the few people that knows how those EOC equipment gets set up, and also I know how the emergency teams are coordinated and how to work the volunteers. As I said, ESS is mandated to the municipality to deliver. Some municipalities deliver it via staff, some via volunteer. Two long-term volunteer ESS directors stepped down in June, so we have two new stepping up, so I'm doing a lot of mentoring and teaching. I also had a long-term emergency radio coordinator step down as well. He retired officially. And so we have four newbies that have stepped up, so again, more mentoring and training to mold these professional subject matter experts into, you know, useful tools. I said that wrong, didn't I? Can I reword that? Okay. And that last one, social media changing the face of EM. As you can tell, with hurricane slash tropical storm, sandy that came through, are we as a municipality ready to deliver the messaging that needs to go out there via social media and to maintain, you know, the information that needs to go out there? It's a lot of information. You look at the public outcry that was, that happened just because of the delay of the notification of the 7.7 earthquake in Haidequai. The public was very loud and clear that 51 minutes is not acceptable. So how do we as a municipality ensure that we are not delayed in that timeline? We need to build the capacity and the capability now before an event happens here in Langley. So, some goals for 2013. The hazard risk and vulnerability analysis process needs to begin for the Township of Langley. Adoption of a comprehensive emergency notification system. We wish to finalize the crisis communication plan, so it dovetails in what we do today-to-date versus EOC activation. EOC hands-on training for the functions, and develop a template for hazard-specific emergency, emergency response guidelines. We appreciate your support in this program and as we move forward to accomplish our goals. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions, Counsel Hall, and then Counsel Arnold?
Your mention of the Alaska One and Not to Be Afraid just sort of reminded me of a question that I was going to ask earlier. I saw on the, I saw on the TV just yesterday, they're starting to run ads on manual, thief, yeah, you know, getting them going, right? Resuscitation, right? And we're talking here about, you know, the best response is a quick response, whether it's emergency or whatever. So, the thing that came to mind was, a number of municipalities have got paddles and whatnot in their recreation centers and, and major meeting spots. And I was just wondering whether we'd included that plan in the capital budget anyway.
Mr. Chung?
Your worship, to Counsel Hall, no, we didn't. We had an analysis done in terms of action defibrillator that was done, also much of paddle. What we, after the analysis, what was deemed appropriate at this time was not to pursue at this time because of the training requiring, the potential liability incurred by the recreational staff, but certainly from the fire and rescue staff, they have that within their rescue trucks. So that's where staff's at right now.
Thank you. Counsel Arnold?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ginger, I noticed you had something to do with the airport. There was that meeting, meeting to do with the airport. Does the airport not have its own program?
The, the Langley Airport?
Yeah.
We can, what we did was, we conducted a workshop, and we gathered the businesses, we invited the businesses that are actually on the site to give them an awareness of, okay, if there is an emergency, this is what to expect, this is how the airport responds, but also to promote business continuity for the businesses that are there, because we actually want them to turn around and be part of that response, because if there is a major event in Langley, the airport will be part of that response, even regionally. So we may be moving staff, we could be removing responders or equipment into the affected area from Langley. We have many helicopters which can land anywhere, and that's an asset. And so we need to know what the assets are within our community that we can utilize and deploy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, Deputy and Ginger, thank you very much. I know it's a major issue, and we all hope it'll never happen, but it's probably not a question of if, it may be when, as we know. So the more ready we are, the better our community will be. So, and please pass on, I know we have an event coming up with the volunteers, because without them, we wouldn't be able to be as prepared as we are. So, please pass on, our thanks. And Deputy, did you have anything else to wrap up?
No, sir. That's it.
Thank you very much. I did, and Counsel Schaefer spoke to this. Counsel Wallace, did you want to say anything about the volunteers for the parade, or Counselor James, whoever?
Sure. Just wanted to thank everybody that came out to volunteer at the parade. I know Paul that's sitting in the audience there, thank you very much for your participation, and LSS kids, and I know Terry, there was a number of other volunteers, the community that pitched in. I know that Starbucks pitched in for coffee with the youth, and the youth volunteers, and, yeah, it was a great parade with, I think we had 50 entries, so we were up from last year. And, yeah, just want to thank Counselor James for all of her organization and help, and council, and recreational staff for hosting a wonderful event. So, thank you.
Counselor James, did you want to add anything to that? It's all been said. It was, and unfortunately, the weather you can never control, but people still seem to have a good time in spite of it. So, and as Counsel Schaefer said, we got wet, but we're drip-dry, so we're okay. Moving on into administrative reports, the first one is, our corporate officer was asked to prepare a report on appearance of candidate names on election ballots. We have the report in our package, and Carolyn, did you want to speak to it at all before I asked for a motion to receive it?
I could just provide a very brief overview of the report. Essentially, there are pros and cons for both listing the names alphabetically or drawing them by lot, which is a random draw. Drawing by lot, there have been complaints from other municipalities that tried it, that they can't find the name on the form as easily. Some candidates claim there's a delay in printing their election materials. If they want to identify whereabouts in the ballot, their name can be found. And there have been actually some cultural issues identified by the City of Vancouver, which happens when they may end up as number four or eight, and those numbers have special meaning to those cultures. The City of Vancouver did go to a draw-by-lot system back in the 90s when it became permitted, and have since reverted back to alphabetical listings. There are only three municipalities in the Lower Mainland that are currently using the draw-by-lot system. But I did also include some research that indicates there can be anywhere from 2.33% to 2.88% increase in the votes that a candidate receives when they are listed first on the ballot, but there doesn't really seem to be a lot of implication when they're listed further down than that. And that vote sums it up.
Thank you. Well, I think the intention of this is to receive this report, and council can have more fulsome discussion. There is a deadline if we do want to make changes to our procedure bylaw for the elections, and you've indicated that in the report. So I'm going to accept the motion to receive the report. Moved by Counsel Arnold, seconded by Counsel Schaefer. And did you want to make a comment, Counsel Schaefer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, staff. One question, with school trustees here in the city, are they drawn out of the hat or are they alphabetical?
Yes, they are. They're drawn by lot.
Why is the, why would that be?
The, the school district runs under its own set of rules, and that is something that they have adopted as their process, and we are obligated to undertake in processing their elections for them.
Thank you very much.
With two being one or two is not as complicated. Counsel Hall?
So I recognize that this is, the recommendation, as it's stated here, is just to receive this for information. And the CAO has suggested that he agrees with the recommendation, which I assume means that we just receive this for information. But could I have an interpretation? So if it's just received for information and council doesn't act on it, does that mean that the recommendation is to maintain what we have as is stated? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. But council will have an opportunity after receiving the report to debate that, and if council wants to change that or to make a different recommendation, we can do that. And the deadline that we have to make that decision by is outlined in the report as well.
Okay. So I would like to speak to this and suggest that if you find some process that suggests that it can make a difference of 2% or more to the democratic process, I would suggest that change would be warranted. Now, I recognize that other jurisdictions have found some flaw with the lot system or the drawing of lots. But using the Vancouver example, for, for example, if I recall history, the only reason that they reverted back to the alphabetized system was to try to influence the election, going back to an alphabetical listing where two mayoralty candidates ran with the same name. And in order to confuse the general public, they had both of those names right beside each other on the ballot. So there can be flaws in that system as well. The assertion that there's less or no influence at the bottom of the ballot, I believe we need to go back and look at the research there as well, because any student of political science realizes that that influence is not only at the top of the ballot, but it's also at the bottom. Lastly, you might suggest that only 2% doesn't really make that much difference. But the difference between the sixth-elected councillor in the last election and the seventh who lost was probably less than that 2%. So if that 2% made the difference between one individual getting in and one not, then I think we need to look at that practice. So I'll serve notice of motion sometime in the future that I will bring forward a motion that suggests that staff be directed to prepare a bylaw under Section 107 to determine election ballot names by lot. But I think there's more research to be done here. I think that the people at this table deserve the opportunity to go through that research before they come to a decision. So I don't want to push it, as you say, we have some time. But I do want to bring this about before personalities get involved and people start saying, oh, he's only doing it to mess around somebody with the letter A in their last name. I want to do it well before we know who's running for the next election, both on council and the other people that are out there. Right now, Mr. Abirahal might have a tremendous advantage.
Thank you.
I would doubt that, but that's okay. That's another subject for discussion. And the report is here to give council information. If you wish more, I know our corporate officer will be happy to see if there is more information available. And I think in reading it, the 2% or 3% is not a lift in voter turnout, it's a lift in the candidate who's at the top of the ballot. And that is a significant disadvantage on one hand, and maybe an advantage on the other hand. So I think council needs to have a full discussion. I agree, I don't think we do it just before the next election, but we do have some time for council to consider it and for us to debate that. And so when you are prepared to bring forward a notice of motion, you can do that, and then we'll have a public debate about that issue. then we'll have a public debate about that issue. So, with that said, uh, we have a motion to receive the report for information. All of those in favor, opposed if any, the motion is carried. Moving on to, uh, the next, uh, option, and there is two recommendations and I'll take them separately. One is that, uh, the carbon neutral options discussion paper by R. Haycock be received. So, if someone would like to move that and seconded, moved by councillor James, seconded by councillor Martin, any discussion on the receipt? Seeing none, all of those in favor, opposed if any, it's carried. And the second motion is that council adopt option three of the carbon neutral options discussion paper and set aside $20,000 based on preliminary estimates of the 2012 emissions in a reserve account in the 2013 financial plan for offsetting 2012 corporate emissions to achieve the carbon neutral operations while continuing to pursue reduction initiatives in accordance with the Corporate Energy and Greenhouse Emissions Plan. Do I have a mover? Moved by councillor Schaefer, seconded, seconded by councillor Hall. Uh, debate on that? Any questions on that? I think it's councillor Martin?
Thank you. Um, when we first decided to do this carbon neutral, um, or join, join, sign the paper, that, that was a few years ago and it was announced at UBCM and I, I believe the province gave us money back to, to, is that the one that they gave us money back?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, can you refresh my memory as to the amount that we?
I believe in 2011, it was about
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Seven thousand, fifteen thousand dollars?
How much?
In 2011, it was fifteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. 2010 was eleven thousand eight hundred and sixty and 2009, eight thousand and three hundred and five dollars.
And we're not getting that anymore, are we, or we are?
Yes.
Okay. So, so the twenty thousand dollars is gonna be over and above the money we get back from the government? Like, the money we're getting from the government, what, what are we doing with that now then?
Mr. Lake or Mr. Chung?
The money, um, goes into general revenues.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I have to say that when this was first announced, I, I thought it was a great idea, you know, we'd be getting money for the provinces, that and the other thing. I guess the concern that I have is that, um, how much it's gonna cost us in the future? And I know it could be up to twenty-seven thousand dollars and that, and the overall budget picture thing is not a lot of money, but it's still twenty-seven thousand dollars. And I, I don't mind supporting this and putting it into a reserve, uh, but did I hear that we may choose not to spend that money for, for carbon offsets next year? We, can we make that decision?
No, what we're planning on doing is, because the problem hasn't been very clear in terms of the, the final outcome of this carbon
Right.
neutral option. So, what we're saying is, and it's been discussed among the RAC members and REAC members that, you know, like Mr. Haycock said, we wanna retain the money within the local governments
Right.
local municipalities. So, we don't really wanna pay to a, a fund that's gonna be invested maybe offshore or, or province. So, what we're trying to do is, before we understand the full scope of what the province wants from us, then we put this money aside into reserve until such time that we're fully understanding what the province would like us to do, then we can spend it. In the meantime, if we want to spend it, uh, like councillor Hall asked, into maybe perhaps Tim's Community Centre, into some, uh, energy efficient equipments, then we can use this money and put it in there and then we get the credit for it. So, we're just reinvesting money into the community rather than give up buying carbon offset for elsewhere purposes.
Yeah, and I mean, that, I, I would be in total favor of doing, um, you know, and that's why I wanted to know where, where all these carbon offsets were, were going. Um, if we're going to reinvest in our own community, yes, we should do that. I mean, it does say in the charter that it is not to be intended to be legally binding, um, or impose legal obligations on, on any party and will have no legal effect. So, does that mean at some point, if we chose to do so, we could take our name off the Climate Act, Action Charter?
Your worship to councillor Martin, I don't believe we can take our name off, but
Okay.
it's a volun, on voluntary basis. So, we have a commitment that we signed on
Right.
to this Climate Action Charter. Uh, even though it's voluntary, we still should commit to what we signed towards.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm, I'm not saying to go back on our commitment, but as, as long as we can get to the point where we're understanding where this money is going and is it gonna go back into our own community? I mean, I think that's very, very important, not off in some other foreign country somewhere.
Correct.
So, and I, and I know that, as you say, you're working on
We're still trying. I know, um, REAC and RAC has written a letter to the province to seek that clarification.
Right.
Uh, unfortunately, uh, we haven't got too far with that at this point.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Councillor Hall?
So, I, I favor this option of putting it in reserve because the rules keep changing. And so, if I give a hockey analogy, uh, if, if we decide that our team's not tough enough, we load up on all these big, slow-moving defensemen that can fight and can hammer people, and then all of a sudden, they change the rules and say that you can't clutch and grab anymore and the game changes to a much more free-flowing thing that values skating. Well, the same thing's happening here. They, they have some, they have some organizations that, that are getting exemptions now from this and, and, and the ability to spend it in more local ways, like the school board, I believe, has, has, has had some concessions. So, the same thing here. We, we might see the rules change, whether it's before or after an election. And by putting this money in reserve, we simply wait for the rule change and then we can adapt to the new league that we play in. So, I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you. Um, I support this as well because what I've read and what I understand is the beauty of this is we reinvested in our own community. If we do energy-efficient updates or retrofits or anything that meets the standards, that money then is used and we get the credit for it. So, that's the key for us. And, um, everything that I've heard from the current government and, uh, from the other parties in this province is they see some of the problems with the program when you're putting money from local communities, when we have lots of challenges on infrastructure and energy efficiency, uh, in buying offsets that go offshore. Um, everybody wants to keep the money reinvesting in our communities. And I think that's where the program is gonna go, if the program even is maintained by the province, and we don't have any assurance of that. So, I support keeping it here. And if we have a project that we can identify that meets the standard, we should be investing our taxpayers' money in that. So, I support it as well. And with that said, I don't see any other hands, so I'll call the question on the motion. All of those in favor, opposed if any, the motion is carried. Now, we'll move into bylaws. The first one is bylaw 2888, final reading of a bylaw to amend the City of Langley zoning bylaw, 1996, number 2100, to add a CD 33 zone to rezone properties located at 19728, 19738, 19754 and 1964 and 1977055A Avenue to a new zone to accommodate 33 townhouse units. Moved by councillor Arnold, seconded by councillor Hall. All of those in favor, it is carried. And we also have consideration of development permit, number 0812. I need a mover for that. Moved by councillor Schaefer, seconded by councillor Hall. All of those in favor, opposed if any, the motion is carried. Moving on to bylaw 2896, third reading of a bylaw to amend the City of Langley zoning bylaw, number 1996, number 2100, to rezone the property located at 5923 Production Way to C2 Service Commercial. That was the subject of our public hearing earlier in the evening. Moved by councillor Martin, seconded by councillor Arnold. Are there any questions before I call the question? Seeing none, all of those in favor, opposed if any, the motion is carried. Bylaw 2898, final reading of a bylaw to enter into an intermunicipal business license scheme. Need a mover. Moved by councillor James, seconded by councillor Martin. All of those in favor, opposed if any, it is carried. Bylaw number 2899, final reading of a bylaw to amend the fees and charges, bylaw dog license fees. I need a mover. Moved by councillor Schaefer, seconded by councillor Martin. No, on final reading, you can't. Thank you. All of those in favor, opposed if any, the motion is carried. Moving on to bylaw 2900, final reading of a bylaw to impose a charge against the owners of residential property for the use of municipal recycling system. I need a mover. Moved by councillor Arnold, seconded by councillor Schaefer. All of those in favor, opposed if any, the motion is carried. Bylaw 2901, final reading of a bylaw to amend the garbage collection bylaw. I need a mover. Councillor Hall, seconded by councillor Wallace. All of those in favor, opposed if any. You're opposed councillor Schaefer? So noted. Bylaw 2902, final reading of a bylaw to amend the Waterworks Regulation bylaw fee schedule. I need a mover. Seconded by councillor James, seconded by, moved by councillor James, seconded by councillor Schaefer. All of those in favor, opposed if any, the motion is carried. Final reading on bylaw 2903, of bylaw to amend the sanitary sewer and storm sewer rates regulation bylaw. Moved by councillor Schaefer, seconded by councillor James. All of those in favor, opposed if any, the motion is carried. We'll now move into motions and notices of motion, and if you will give me a second, I'm going to move down. So, the first one is that council let the following dates be set as dates for regular meetings of council in 2013. You have all of those dates and media has a copy of them, so I won't read them all. I need a mover. Moved by councillor James, seconded by councillor Wallace. Any questions by anyone? All of those in favor, opposed if any, the motion is carried. Moving on to the next one, I need a motion that councillor Martin be appointed to the Metro Vancouver Board of Directors for the year 2013 with Mayor Fassbender as the alternate. Moved by councillor Wallace, seconded by councillor James. Any questions, councillor Hall?
Um, I just wanted to put this in perspective. So, there's, so there's, um, compensation for these positions, both proposed B and C. I don't wanna get into personalities or have people defend or whatever. The question I'm gonna ask is a historical one. When the, uh, city set its, uh, its policy, uh, for, uh, mayor and council, uh, pay and whatnot, indemnity and whatnot, was, see, I was not a council at the time, so, and they tied it to the median of the metro councils and whatnot, tied it to what the mayor, whatever. Anyway, the townships had a report and they'd done a debate about their process and sent everything back. And so, the question I was gonna ask was when, when councils set their original policy of compensation, was that before the added, um, compensation that came due through these directorships that are appointed or was it, uh, at the same time?
Metro, uh, directors have always received a stipend for attending meetings. Uh, the alternates do not receive anything unless they attend a meeting in the stead of the main director. And that has been ever since we joined Metro, um, that particular policy from a Metro point of view. So, when we set our remuneration policy or any other community has, it is with the knowledge that those that are appointed to those receive an extra stipend for attending those.
So, Metro, I'm just trying to backtrack on history. Now, Metro replaced the GVRD?
One and the same, GVRD and Metro.
Okay, so I'm just trying to get a sense of when city council set the compensation formula that they generated, uh, in, in terms of, I guess, getting a handle on what the compensation was at that time for a Metro directorship. So, when, whether Metro has gone up at a higher rate than council remuneration or, or it's the same, I just wanna get a handle on it 'cause I, I'm looking at perhaps revisiting that, uh, formula that we operate on.
Mr. Chung?
Your worship to councillor Hall. Uh, the remuneration for council, it doesn't actually tie into Metro Vancouver conversation. It's strictly speaking from each municipal council that we base it on the medians of all municipal mayors. So, it doesn't tie into at all.
No, I, I realize that it doesn't tie into the formula, but it's an add
I'm gonna call a point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, councillor Martin, point of order.
The motion we are dealing with is, uh, the appointment to Metro Vancouver. We're not dealing with council remuneration or Metro Vancouver remuneration.
Then I'll get back to, I'll get back to the point then, okay? The direct question then is, uh, what does the compensation do to, uh, the people that are appointed for the positions as noted in B and C, which is added, uh, to their council stipend? What is the compensation?
Uh, the, you know, again, I think the appointment, but the, the remuneration for Metro directors is 300 and
Forty-six dollars?
Thirty-six dollars
I don't know.
per meeting, yeah.
I don't know what it is.
Per meeting. And, uh, in terms of the library board, our director does not get any compensation. It's zero.
Okay.
So, going back to the motion to appoint councillor Martin and Mayor Fassbender as the alternate. Any other questions? Seeing none, all of those in favor, opposed if any, the motion is carried. And now, moving to the Fraser Valley Regional Library appointment, that councillor Schaefer be appointed to the Fraser Valley Regional Library Board for the year 2013 with councillor James as the alternate. Moved by councillor Martin, seconded by councillor Wallace. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all of those in favor, opposed if any. Saying you don't get any compensation, councillor Schaefer. I know you're doing
I'm thinking right now.
Yeah, right, exactly.
[laughing]
Thank you. And there is no correspondence. Is there any unfinished business? Seeing none. Is there any new business? Seeing none. All of those in favor. Well, I guess I need a motion to adjourn. Councillor Schaefer, seconded by councillor Hall. All of those in favor, it is carried. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.